Technology Plan. And we're all delighted that ECS isn't just, let's just throw technology at them. So, thank you for that also. Hooray. Not that it ever was, not that it ever was in this district.
That's just so strange, boy.
Never in a million years in this district, but it is, I swear. So, thank you for not making it into that here. So, Technology Plan. Do you want to say anything, or Jennifer?
Um, no. I think Jennifer, Dr. Fisher Miller did a perfect job the other night of really pulling together with a lot of able assistance from Mr. Stokes, from Mr. Moore, and others. You know, the essence of this technology plan, and what we've tried to put forward over the last year and a half with the overnight study group and others. And some of you didn't get a chance to see that presentation, and we wanted to make sure you did. So, Dr. Fisher knows I stand on the podium for a little while longer with a bottle of water.
Yeah, yeah. A cup of coffee. Alrighty. Well, thank you very much. So, what I would like to do for you tonight is to bring some meaning to our technology plan and help folks understand why are we doing it? What is it exactly that we are doing? And what do we hope to see from it? Such that it is clear that we're not just doing things to make them better, but to actually make a difference and make a difference in the student's experience and student learning. We are very driven by our mission. And the language in our mission is about helping students to pursue a productive and fulfilling life. What's critically important about this is to understand that we have to do that work, okay? That idea of developing students here, both in their real time right now, in their world right now, and also with an understanding of what it is that will come before them in their future, which is extraordinarily hard in this day and age. Technology is absolutely an inescapable reality to this work here in terms of working with students now and helping them to prepare for their futures. But it's also, I believe, an immeasurable opportunity. So, why this technology? As I said, so we're responsible as educators, as leaders of this school system, to help prepare students for their futures, college, career, and citizenship. This is not new for Brookline. All right? We have always sought to prepare students for college, career, and citizenship. The part that's new is around preparing them now for their futures. All right? Not our pasts, but their futures. And that's quite different. The literature is replete of all the ways that schools need to change and all the adjustments that need to be made to actually have students become prepared and be ready for what is coming in the future. And you hear this reference so often to 21st century skills. Let me say right now that it's a phrase that I don't like at all. They're not new skills, all right? What they are are high priority skills, okay? It's more than important than ever, more important than ever, that students are able to actually think critically about the massive material that is before them, to communicate well, to collaborate, and to be creative. And what I just outlined there are the four Cs. Call them the super skills, call them 21st century skills, high priority skills, whatever it may be. But what is very important now, in addition to the three Rs, right? Reading, writing, arithmetic. It's about communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. And technology plays an essential role in those. So, for generations, for generations, Brookline has enjoyed a reputation of excellent schools. And that definition of excellence cuts across multiple measures. And this is just one example of a single measure. Here is the picture of one of the department's report cards, if you will, of a school. And let me zoom in on this upper right-hand corner. These pointers just aren't working. The school percentile. So, Brookline schools continue, continue to rank in the highest percentiles in the state of like schools. Ninety-eight, ninety-six, ninety-one. For generations, that has been true in Brookline. We know the times are changing, and they're changing very, very fast. The town of Brookline is changing, school enrollment is changing, not only in our numbers, but in the students that are coming to us. You've heard Dr. Lupini talk about our ELL population. We've seen studies about the differences in socioeconomic status of students coming to Brookline. It's been described as sort of the barbell, more students of low income, more students of upper income. As those changes are happening, we are in now what's called the information age. I'll talk more about that in a minute. So, with this change, this how technology has changed our world, the goal of public education has also changed. I'll speak to that again also. And the public schools of Brookline, our goals have changed. We have created Strategic Plan 2.0. So, we're in a position where we have to change, okay? The federal government has changed goals for public education, and we want to change. And again, technology plays a critical role. For generations, we've seen evidence of this high achievement. And what I'm showing you here is high achievement, and we are stuck. All right? We have plateaued. Again, I'm using MCAS as an example, but I could put up other measures that would be similar. We have improved over time, and now we have plateaued. So, with community input, with the school committee, with staff, we've created the next version of our strategic plan, Strategic Plan 2.0. These goals are very forward-thinking. These goals are about students in the world today and in what we believe might be the case for their future. There's an example of technology being used or cutting through each and every one of these goals. So, if we're talking about every student achieving, what we can do with technology is what was pointed to in the earlier presentation. Technology can help us challenge all students. It can increase that rigor and relevance. It can help students to actually learn the skills that are necessary in this, in this new world, about how to use the Internet properly and responsibly, to become responsible digital citizens. And technology plays a critical role as we look as educators to grow professionally. You hear again and again, I'm talking about the student learning data, all right? Technology plays an important role for us to access that data and to analyze it and get it back quickly. The new world. So, the federal government has changed the goal for public education. You are very familiar with NCLB, with the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. It is not, it's no longer about 100% of students proficient in math and ELA. That is no longer the goal, or one of the goals. It's about college and career readiness. College and career readiness in today's world and in the future. So, what does that mean? I've pulled out some examples here just from the Massachusetts frameworks, the ELA literacy frameworks. So, there's one whole section describing college and career readiness. Students use technology and digital media strategically and capably. If that's a definition of college and career readiness, then that's what, that's the direction for us. That's the work that we have to do. So, we have to actually engage kids in the use of that technology to actually learn those skills. The definition talks about understanding perspectives and cultures. Again, technology plays an important role there. And you see here, reference to a 21st century classroom, which is different than a classroom even in the 90s, the 80s. It has changed very, very quickly. I was reminded today that if you think about our world and how quickly we have changed, that the iPhone, all right? The iPhone, we didn't have, it came in 2007, all right? We're in 2015. Think about what that particular device has done and how that has changed. So, 21st century classrooms are not the classrooms of the 1990s, the 80s, and so on. The idea of students demonstrating independence, okay? So, how do they actually operate on the Internet in a responsible fashion, in a way that they can work through this mass of information and identify what is meaningful, what is actually authentic, and how do they then actually use that information to create knowledge? So, not only, excuse me, not only is it about the federal government telling us that our goal has changed, college and career readiness, not only is it about our strategic plan goals, 2.0, about those changing, but it's about our need to advance technology in our schools because teachers are making these moves, as they should. So, in our survey, we asked teachers about, do they have sufficient access to technology? And what you see here is a dramatic difference across our schools. These percentages range, they're in the 30s, the 40s, the 50, excuse me, 30s, 40s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, all right? That's unacceptable. That, that shows us that there is inequity across our system. What I am happy to say, though, is the Runcle School comes out at 92%. The Runcle School is our best provisioned school right now. Through that renovation project and the leadership of Mr. Moore and Dr. Vin Bouchain, they have technology, and it took us a little bit to get to this point, okay? But their use of technology has increased dramatically in terms of its appropriate use and its effective use. And teachers now are reporting a 92% response rate. Parents are telling us, all right, in terms of their level of satisfaction of technology in the schools. Again, look at that range, okay? So, that experience is quite different across our system. The Heath School, 82%. Beep, 85%. What I can tell you, in both of those environments, the parent-school communication is very strong, is very strong. So, I think that's an element of that higher percentage. I can also tell you, at the Heath School, it is one of the strongest PTOs in our system that supports technology in the school. So, again, not a surprise there that the Heath School is high. So, let me give you some examples here of where we are right now. So, as I said, teachers are actually accessing technology. They are using it to improve their teaching, to support student learning. So, this teacher is using a document camera. It's the 21st century, if you would, overhead projector, right? You can put any document on that, on that device there, and it will present out not just the transparency sheet. What's different here is that while I would go to the chalkboard and pull down the movie screen, right? This teacher went to the window and pulled down her window shades because she does not have a whiteboard and a mounted projection system. So, we're falling short here. We've made advances, but we're falling short. This is evidence of a teacher not waiting, all right? This teacher needs a mounted projector. This teacher went out and bought a mounted projector. And we are sorry to say, they went ahead and installed it, and I'm happy to say that this teacher now has a Brookline-installed mounted projector.
That's not going to follow the student's head.
Oh, that's right. That was actually not up for long. That was up for a matter of months before we actually replaced it.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, yeah. But we're, we got the message. So, this picture, that spinning, all right? You've all seen that, okay? We have, we've made great strides in terms of the strength of our network. We have, we have, we're going to need to continue to grow that. But what I can tell you is that this image right here is known either as a lesson buster. Let's see, what else? Beach ball death, or marble of doom, all right? And those are our references to when a teacher plans a lesson for technology and gets it up and ready to go, and then you get that spinning ball, all right? And the question is, how long do you wait? Right? How long do you wait? If you're the teacher of a second grade class, how long do you wait? A teacher of a seventh grade class, how long do you wait? Right? So, it's difficult. Again, we've made some really strong steps, but we have further steps to go. We, we are a very collaborative school system. We are a school system that actually does collect data. We do use data. What we're not doing well yet is we're not actually collecting that data, analyzing it, getting it back to the user in a timely and effective fashion. So, it's not that we're not using it, it's not that we don't have it, all right? This actually is evidence of an inventory. Yeah. Access. So, this is just from the high school. So, what's really difficult is to actually make the point and not be embarrassed by it. Okay? This is hard. This is hard.
I almost, like anybody who says, like, we don't need a technology planner. I told this to, like, an email automatically in my inbox.
Yeah.
It's just so hard.
Yeah. And it's, it's hard work that our, that our educators are doing. So, this is a comment from an educator at the high school. We've added two computer carts in our rotation last year, along with the Humanities Lab, are frequently booked all blocks of the day. It's like adding lanes to a highway in a metropolitan area. New lanes are immediately packed with traffic. Demand always exceeds supply. And then, down there, the last paragraph. Without the certainty of knowing the devices will be ready and accessible, and that the tech support will be available, teachers are reluctant to plan lessons that require technology. So, again, the reason I'm showing you this is I want to acknowledge the steps that we have taken, all right? The improvements that are being made, but we can't, we can't stop, we can't pause. We have to move forward aggressively and really use the momentum that we have. Or teachers are going to lose confidence, and they're going to step way back. So, what this is about is the next generation, all right? We have a technology goal. We have a very, very basic technology goal about the infrastructure, about instructional capacity, and about the full integration of the technology into teaching and learning. And so, when I think about this goal, and I think about the idea of the next generation, I sort of pause, and I think, so where else in our lives are we experiencing this idea of the next generation? If you think about transportation and how transportation has changed across, whether you're talking about, you know, air transportation, or trains, or, you know, your car. Think about your car and the inside of your car. What does it look like now versus what did it look like 10, 15 years ago? Okay? So, your car now is using technology greatly, and it's not only for comfort and use, easy use, it's for safety. So, there are multiple reasons that technology is having dramatic impact on transportation. For an example, banking. How do you bank now versus how did you use to bank? All right? It is the next generation. So, technology in our schools, it's about the next generation of our schools and about how we are moving into the teaching and learning of our times and the future. So, the next-generation classroom, all right? What we're talking about are the very basic tools of today. We're talking about the Internet. We're talking about devices to access the Internet. And then, we're talking about the system that's necessary to actually project, show, share with the class there, the mounted projection system. So, what you have here, this is today's version, you know, of access to the library and the film projector and the movie screen, all right? But these are the contemporary tools, as well as the digital resources. So, collectively, across these four items here, this describes the tools that are necessary for teaching and learning today. Now, these are not tools for the sake of tools, all right? These are tools that teachers access when they are designing learning for students that help them meet the learning objectives within the curriculum. So, a quick look at this graphic. These pointers are not working. What you have here is that those, well, it's, it's strange because it works there, but it doesn't work there.
No, use my elbow.
It works against, yeah, no kidding. So, what you have here is the red sides, okay? Curriculum, it's about skills, and then it's about assessment, all right? That's about what the student, the students are learning. And then, you've got instruction on the right, all right? And then, you have resources. The idea here is what are the resources that teachers need to bring to bear to engage students in that form of instruction to meet those teaching and learning goals? Technology is that, that one side, that resources. That I'm talking right now about the tools, please understand that technology itself can also be part of content and skills, all right? In terms of like coding or computer science. But what I'm talking about specifically now is around technology as a tool for learning. So, how do we integrate technology to enhance teaching and learning? It's about these basic tools. So, this is Google Earth, and what happens here is that Google Earth can be manipulated. So, that can be projected onto a screen, and students can actually come up and move, right? Google Earth around, and then play tectonics, that whole shifting, that actually happens right there with them, right before them. It's interactive. As opposed to, when I was a teacher, you hit play, and the movie goes forward to show that, that change over time. Much more passive, this is much more active. And what we know is that engaging students is critically important to their learning. This is an example of how we're using technology that supports students from the Learning Center. I can just give you a minute there to, to read this example. So, this teacher is making reference to Google Drive, to Canvas, which is the learning management system at the high school. And the idea that what this student is doing is using these tools to support his organization of the classes and also the content material. So, this is the example, an example of a, a class Skyping with a student in a class on the other side of the world, all right? We have a classroom teacher who is using Twitter. And she uses Twitter to have her students engage with students in, in Hong Kong, in Israel, in China, around the world. And what those students are doing, it's, it's a bit of, you know, the contemporary version of Pen Pals. But what's different is these students are talking about the content. They're talking about geography. They're talking about items in our social studies curriculum. And they're doing it with kids around the world, increasing global awareness, right? Excuse me?
What languages, Adam?
I would assume English.
You're in the first grade.
This is first grade, thank you. Yeah, yeah. The, the teacher using Twitter. Thank you. So, this is a bank of the resources that are available, online resources in all of our libraries. So, when a student has access to the Internet with a device, they have access to all of this. Whereas, back in my day, it was about having an encyclopedia at home, if you were lucky. What this is about is if we get the tools in students' hands and teachers' hands, it's about everyone having access to this rich information. This is an example of how technology is being used to actually engage in authentic science. Students in fifth grade across our system are participating as citizen scientists with Cornell University's Bird Sleuth Project. And what they do is they collect data, and they load it then into this massive database that other students across the country are doing. So, here they are in Brookline putting that in, as well as in Austin, Texas, or Chicago, wherever it is. But they are engaging in real science. This is an example of using Google Docs to have a conversation, basically, to give feedback to a student on his writing. And I've heard lots of interesting ways that people are using Google Docs here. So, this is teacher to student. But it's also being used for student to student, multiple students engaging on a single piece of text. And understand that if you're talking about students getting feedback on their work, the teacher has control over what students see and who students can, you know, who they can visit, whose work they can visit. So, it's not this wide open, everybody is publicly writing to each other and for each other. I was at a grade six, seven, eight English meeting this afternoon and observing our coordinator, and they were having a discussion about writing, and the teacher commented on her ability to use Google Docs to give students feedback. And she used the phrase, "It's a life changer." And I asked her afterwards, I said, "What did you mean by that? Like, that's really strong. What did you mean?" And what she told me, she said, "I was talking about one student specifically." And what she's able to do with this student is, is invisible to everyone else, the feedback that she's giving this student, and the amount of time that she is spending with this student that otherwise she couldn't with that child, and she wouldn't in a large class of 20-something be with that one student. And so, she said she is seeing just a remarkable shift in this young man. She's describing that as a life changer. Life changer, possibly, okay? What we are doing now is we are making these devices accessible to everyone, to everyone. So, here's an example of, you know, the librarian helping a student to sign out a Mac. Again, student learning data. Google Forms allows me to quickly assess students' knowledge on a topic prior to teaching or after teaching a lesson, and have the results sent to a spreadsheet where I can quickly eyeball students who need more help on a concept versus the old method of leafing through stacks of paper.
Jennifer, can I go back to the other slide for a second?
Which? This one?
Just make a comment.
Yes, please.
I wanted to make a comment. We talked earlier about what we hear in the community. So, I heard the community this week, students from Step, Students from Steps to Success, other students came in front of the school committee X number of years ago, said one of the challenges is access, and nothing's been done about it. I read that. And that's not true. You actually approved a budget last year for us to buy devices. We put them in, in libraries so that they would be accessible, and students are borrowing. And if it's anything like when Mr. Moore reported to me on, on this issue last year, those devices are flying out of libraries for students who don't have access to be able to have that access. So, in fact, the school committee and the administration did do something about it. We want to do more. We think we need to do more down the road, but, but we did take some initial steps to address some of those issues. Thank you.
Yes. And so, they're available for sign-out, but also through a grant. In addition to that, students in Steps to Success who were identified as in greatest need now have Chromebooks, all right? Chromebooks that they, they are responsible for. Thank you for going back, Dr. Lupini. So, this is just an example of, again, the idea of a quick visual to allow teachers to monitor student learning. This is a Heath teacher. It is an example of homeschool communication. And when, when Mr. Moore first showed us this in senior staff, what he did is he played the video that this teacher, first-grade teacher, made and sent to all the families of those incoming first graders so that they could watch this video about first grade at Heath before they went to school the first day. Yeah, yeah. So, I visited this recently, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to pull it up. It's a Weebly here. But it is, if you can read the top there, there's a blog, so it's students blogging as well as the teacher. But there's specific parent information, mystery readers, student links, photos and videos. Parents could go in, onto this site here, and they can, they can feel as if they are right in the classroom for days and days. There's so much information, and they can see their children right there. And so, it really, I think, is an example of what may have the Heath School parents respond, that they, they are, 82% of them believe the technology is being used well. So, this is here, the data that we have on our first phase, the rollout from this year in terms of what we were able to, to bring to our inventory. I'll show, you'll see here, FY14, this ratio. What this is about is the number of students to instructional computer, okay? So, that means the computers that are either available in a lab or that are available on a cart that go into the classroom. So, what you see here is a high at the peer school of eight and a low at the Heath School of 2.9, all right? This is, again, representation of a vast inequity in our system. With this first infusion, increasing that inventory, what we were able to do is move that range, that 5.18 range, down to a 1.38. 1.38 range. What we want to do, and you'll see in a chart later, is that ratio What we want to do, and you'll see in a chart later, is that ratio right now is about at an average, I believe, of 4.3. And for our next couple of years, we want to bring it to a 2.5. Again, a very strong first step and there's more work to do. How are we going to do this? I have made the comment that I believe that there has been some confusion with our tech plan because it's so simple. Okay? Seriously. That what we have to do, we have to continue to acquire the tools. We have to continue to engage in the robust professional development that's essential that we are doing. We have to evaluate our current structures, town, school. And we have to secure the new staff that are essential to make this work, help this work move forward. In terms of those tools, okay? What I'm talking about here are the very basics of a foundation. The infrastructure, the devices, the mounted projection system, those digital resources. I showed you that bank of resources there. What we are learning from directors, coordinators, department heads is they need different ones. They need some more in order to support the learning of all students. And we have to be sure that we continue the subscriptions that we have. And we need data and operations tools. Very quickly, if I may, you've heard me talk a whole bunch about the student data. There are operations tools in our budget right now. For example, Registration Gateway. Okay? It's a tool to help our new Office of Student Affairs actually register students. Here is the chart of the planned inventory. All right? This is the idea about equity of devices. This is idea about lowering that ratio. So what you see here is across the top, there's our increase in student enrollment over time. And then you have the existing inventory with those new inventory adds of 600 computers, 600 devices every year. And what that is, is that's a new three-year lease started with those 600 devices every year to then increase those totals such that by FY18, we would be looking at an inventory of 4,800 computers for student instructional use. What that does, if you look then down at the bottom, is it moves our ratio from what was a 7.0 down to what will be a 2.4. As well, this is about life cycle. All right? We have had our devices not be replaced for seven-plus years. Okay? Seven years in technology time, right? You think about what is different now. And that's been a huge strain on the staff to try to keep those devices up and running. What we want to do is we want to move to a four-year cycle and we have funds in the budget to support that.
I was just going to say, the example you gave earlier, that seven years would be about equal to owning the first iPhone, right?
Yes. So there have been questions about what's your professional development plan? Well, we have a professional development strategy. And it's a different word because there's great complexity to what's necessary to meet the needs of all of our educators with all of the learning that's required for the type of shift that we're talking about. So there's learning about the actual tool and how do you turn it on and how do you use it properly. Then there's learning about how do you actually redesign your lessons to maximize the potential of technology. And then there's a learning across the spectrum of different adult learners that we have. So there is no simple list of here are the workshops that we are offering. Not only don't we have that, it's that it's not the most effective. Okay? Research shows that adult learning has the greatest impact on students over time when it's ongoing, when it's job embedded, when it's simply the part, it's just part of your job, it's the work you do. And in Brookline, that's about coaching. I'll come back to that there. We essentially have these three prongs, if you will, to our strategy. As I just said, the idea of our coaches. Instructional coaching is a very important part of our professional learning in Brookline. We're talking here about educational technology specialists, but you heard me earlier talking about our ECS resource teachers. We also have our librarians who serve as coaches for teachers. The idea being that these are people with a certain area of expertise that they then support other educators to learn about that area. We have professional learning groups, professional learning communities across our system. And there's research that supports those characteristics of a professional learning community and how people learn in collaboration with their colleagues. And again, this is evidence of job embedded professional development. We have collaborative time built into our school day. As you know well, the four days of extended time then allows us to release early on Fridays and teachers come together to do that work as well as we have planning common time. All of this job embedded work is effective because it's within a culture of collaboration and a culture of continuous learning. It is simply how our educators do their job. Then I've got this category I'm calling required. And what I mean by that is that these are, they're programs, they're days, time that might be within our contract. They are certain structures that are in place. And when we have professional development that we want every single educator to engage in, then here are our strategies to get at that kind of learning. Recently, in our mentoring induction program, our second and third year teachers all gathered to have a day of choice around some technology. And our ETSs and some teachers came to offer that professional learning for those teachers. We have the 183rd day. What that's about is a six-hour block of time for professional learning that in the past we used for an app called Teach Point, which related to our evaluation. You know well the idea of release days. And we have release time and just other examples there of how we've used ETSs, ed tech specialists. When we had learning that was required, that we knew that everybody absolutely had to have in order to roll something out, we structure that delivery with our ed tech specialists. And the example here that I'm using is with Google Apps. We've rolled Google Apps in grades six, seven, eight first and then recently in grades four and five. And we did that in a very planful, structured way. And we have department meetings. And then there are lots of opportunities. And I have to tell you that Brookline educators absolutely take advantage and create these opportunities. And we have wonderful partners that allow for this. I've mentioned the Brookline Education Foundation, but as well the 21st Century Fund. We have accessed grants from the Department of Education with the leadership of Amy Martin. We do offer workshops. Workshops are very effective when you have sort of that technical learning that's necessary. We support conferences. The Building Learning Communities Conference is the Allen November Conference. And we have had upwards of...
For two years, I think we've had over 80.
Over 80 Brookline educators participating over two years in that conference, which is right here in Boston. And again, the emphasis for that conference is about, it's about the teaching and learning and then how do you actually...
Oh, Building Learning Communities.
Building Learning Communities, yes. Other opportunities, we support educators in online courses, but also reimbursement for courses, face-to-face courses. And Mr. Moore and Ms. Martin have created this thing that are called Tech Talks, where teachers come together and they present the work that they are doing. And that has been well attended and lots of fun. Every single one of these offerings are always aligned to the school and the system goals. And what we do is we have a needs assessment that we administer every year, but also we attend to our evaluations. And what is it that we see through the evaluation process? What is the learning that is needed? So the third element of our strategy for how we're rolling out this tech plan is around the staffing. And the budget right now contains two new positions of the multiple positions that are necessary. The first one is the Digital Learning Specialist. I think the title's still in question, maybe Digital Media Specialist. The idea here is that when we identify an app, an application, that we want to go system-wide, there is a transition process from the acquisition and investigation of that particular app to actually getting it to the user and having the learning that's necessary for the appropriate implementation of that app. So what I mean is that, take Teach Point, for example. That's the app that we are using for evaluation. So we worked with the vendor and we purchased that app. And then Mr. Moore played the role with Corey Stott to load everything that was necessary, all right? All the educators, all the evaluators that needed to be in that app, okay? But then we had to load all the forms, the evaluation forms, all right? And we had to get all the users up and ready. So Scott Moore played that role of getting us all trained, keeping that app up and running. If you had a question, who did you call? You called Scott. That's not the work of our Director of Educational Technology and Libraries, all right? That's the work of a Digital Learning Specialist. And what's difficult is I could give you about five other app examples of that. So we, this is a very important position. And the idea here is that they transfer this learning and then they hand it off. They hand it off to the owner. Teach Point, to that example, it now rests with Dr. Allen and her staff in HR. A data manager. What this is about, student data, student learning data, over and over, you've heard me say that. What we have to do is we have to do a better job at the actual collection, analysis, dissemination, interpretation of our data. And we have a Director of Accountability and Research right now who's serving as our data manager. All right? That's not the work that we need her to do. We need to have a data manager who can do this work to then allow Ms. Stott to be the So that's the why we are doing it, that's what we are doing, that's how we are doing. And then the question is, is it working? What's the impact? This is expensive, all right? So what's the return on the investment? Multiple measures. It's not a single particular point of evidence that I would be showing you. It's over time and it's lots of different ways. The star chart is something that Scott Moore submits every year to the department. It is a review of the technology, where we are now and its use and how it's being applied. We will be able to see over time what that looks like because we are then reporting the actual. Surveys. There are examples of the surveys and the survey questions that we ask. We'll be able to look at those. And I think I give you some other examples in just a minute. Student learning data. I believe so very strongly that the reasons we are seeking to acquire this technology is to enhance teaching and learning. If we are enhancing teaching and learning, it will then have impact on student learning and we will be able to see that in the measurements of that learning. Whether that is the state measurement of college and career readiness or it's about the assessments that we do internally here in Brookline. Over time, we need to have that as one of our points of impact and success. And then again, to point to the strategic plan. The next generation, Strategic Plan 2.0, it is forward thinking. What we have to do is we have to take those visionary goals and unpack them to get to very specific measurable goals that have these metrics. And they have those action plans. And it is those metrics that we will be reporting to you publicly in at school in Brookline over time and being accountable to this work that I'm sharing with you tonight. So these are just examples of those survey questions that I shared earlier, that when we do this right, we're going to see these results. When we do this right, we're going to have all of our schools in the 90s, not just one. When we do this right, we'll hear from parents that they are satisfied, that they are seeing the effective use of technology. When we do this right, we will improve access for all students. This survey right here was a survey given last year to our Brookline High School students. We asked them about their Internet connection and the device that they have or don't have. And for the device, this is actually question number two, but it's the first one listed here. All right? We have 32% of students who do not have a device that they can bring to school to do their schoolwork. All right? Only 68% do. 18% of our students are without a high-speed Internet connection at home. 18%. So think for a minute back to the slide that I showed you about those digital resources. All right? If you are a student with a device and a high Internet connection, a high-speed Internet connection, you can access those resources. That information is available to you. If you don't, you can't. And that is an opportunity that is inequitable in our system right now. So whether we're measuring, whether it's PARC, whether it's MCAS 2.0, whatever it is, I believe that in time, we will be able to show you an increase in our student learning. And again, publicly, publicly, we share with you the metrics of Strategic Plan 2.0. And you'll be able to see for yourself, in fact, how we're doing. So we're at a critical time right now, all right? We need to continue to be able to say that over generations, Brookline schools are high achieving. We need to be able to say that yes, times are changing, but so are we. And that they are changing so fast and we are keeping up. We are shifting. We are making the adjustments that are necessary. We need to acknowledge that no longer is it about this finite body of knowledge that rests with a single teacher in the classroom that he imparts then to his students, that they then tell back to the teacher. It's about an infinite, infinite array of information that is accessible 24/7 if you have the right resources and the knowledge how to use that properly. With the change in the goal from the Federal Department of Education and our change in our strategic plan, all right? We will be able to show you those metrics and to show you impact over time. And so it really comes down that we have to provide our teachers the contemporary tools of teaching and learning to meet these new goals, to achieve this excellence as defined for today and for tomorrow because Brookline has always been about college, career, citizenship. What's different now is the age and the time and how things have changed. And this is what we need to make that next step. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Clearly, there's a lot of myth busting here also, what it is we're doing and we're not doing. So thank you for laying it out so clearly with, you know, the link from our goals to our devices, to our staffing, to the professional development, to the definition of success for kids. So it's terrific to see it with really specific examples and how it ties into the big picture. So thank you. Ms. Trebelski?
Well, I wanted to thank you again for doing it a second time. I know you had to do this once before for the advisory committee, but it really was very illuminating. And I sort of want to apologize for my burst out before, but probably there was a kid in that class who spoke the language of the student and could translate with all our ELL students from around the world.
Oh, that's exciting.
I imagine that's probably what the teacher did. I mean, how else could, you know? So it, I think you're, this is really important. It fits in with what we saw at the 21st Century Fund and how we have to educate our children today. I mean, I'm certainly proud of the older generation and can barely use an iPad and iPhone, but, you know, our kids know how to do that and can do even more. And we should be having them do more. So thank you.
Great. Other observations or questions? I mean, we've talked about this a number of times. I feel like that's a challenge with our meetings. We have these discussions in subcommittee meetings and we get here and we say, "Yep, we've already kind of talked about this," which is great. Go ahead.
And not to keep us all here. So one of the things I was wondering as you were taking us through this is, is there a district in Massachusetts or anywhere else that we hold ourselves up to? Who's gotten this right? And what are, and is all of this beautiful planning and objectives and goals, is it based on what they're doing right? Or are we making this up in our usual Brookline way? It's like, we love what they're doing, but in Brookline, we should really, you know, sort of structure it this way? Is there, who's gotten it right?
So I don't believe there is a single school system that's gotten it right. What I believe and through our research is that there are elements of right, if you will, across our state, but then our country in terms of what does this actually look like in a school and in Brookline. And so it's a little bit of the latter, I'm sorry to say. Okay? What I mean by that is that I am very proud that the way we are seeking to use technology... What I mean by that is that I am very proud that the way we are seeking to use technology is fundamentally about designing learning. Fundamentally, all right? And that there are examples of great uses of iPads or Chromebooks, you know, folks that have a gig of internet access and, you know, how they're able to move through that. There are lots of those examples, and I think Mr. Moore could probably give you the names of the schools, for sure. But what I appreciate is seeing where there is great success, great impact, and then translating, not transferring, translating that back to Brookline. But we actually have quite a list of models. There are absolutely exemplars.
Other questions? Ms. Gata?
I was going to say, I'm not sure in the, I'm not sure as many in the Commonwealth. Although there are some, I think you're right about, oh, I think you're right about some pieces.
Right. And I would just say that I think it's important to distinguish between getting it right in terms of the full-on instructional learning, to your point, and designing, and what our plan is, which is plumbing, or as you often talk about it. And there are districts in the state who are light-years past us.
Yes.
Right. And some of those districts are poorer than we are.
Yes.
And so, when I went to the Massachusetts Association for the School Committee Conference, I was so embarrassed to not be able to, because the assumption was, we had all of this. And actually, the district that I spoke to that had all of the plumbing right anyway was Worcester. I was like, Worcester? Okay. And it was, you know, and it was because, to your point about enrichment challenge and support, and how much it cost to do this, they, you know, they just went whole hog on the purchase and the setup. But now, I can't tell you what the outcomes have been in terms of student learning, but in terms of just getting it done and set up, it seemed like they had actually taken that leap to get the equipment set up and people trained and all of that stuff.
And there are, I mean, I've said it over and over again, right? But in terms of particular schools within a district, I think Beverly High School has it right. And in the one-to-one initiative, they started six or seven years now, Mr. Moore, ago? Something like that? Yeah. Yeah. And there are some districts, I mean, the district Mark Edwards is in, people look to. There are some districts around the country that...
I guess, when I, when I hear about that, and, I mean, in Worcester, so I wonder, I go right to the thing that always resonates for me, just because I had a parent who started the community technology access movement. So the part that always resonates for me is the detail on how many of our students go home. And as soon as they are home, they are cut off from all of this work. They're cut off from their teachers, from their friends, from their, from the work that is available to them, to the, you know, it's not just the information that's available, it's the work. And, and I wonder, in a place like Worcester, that clearly has put it in place in the schools, but, but if it in fact is generating a different way of working for every student and every teacher, what do you do about the kids who go home and are suddenly cut off from that? I mean, that's an extraordinary challenge and why I'm really, really proud that it is, has such a central role in what we're talking about, because the idea of expanding inequities as we move forward to try to close inequities is a core frustration of this work, and a piece of what is so expensive and what most districts, including maybe this one, right, don't have the appetite for in terms of really solving.
There are some of those districts who, out of necessity, right, have, in cooperation with the city, with city government, have gotten it right. So they've figured out ways to make sure it's written in the cable contracts, they've figured out ways to divert bandwidth at particular times of the day when they're not using it. They figured some of those things out, because they had to. And others who look very much like those, like a Worcester, haven't.
And we're going to need to figure that out.
We're clearly going to need to.
And that's why, one of the things that was frustrating to me when we were talking about technology on the town side, was that, one of the conversations I've had with many of the selectmen is, is to say, you know, "It's not like the town side has this figured out. There are things that the town needs to be investing in that will be absolutely essential to the success of this happening." And those sorts of cooperative agreements are exactly the same.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think part of, part of our obligation, I mean, I know we do have this cooperation on the town side, and that's a wonderful thing, but part of our obligation as a committee, as we work with the town, is to emphasize things like that, because we cannot do this on our own. This has got to be a town-wide effort.
Right. Absolutely.
In order for it to work for all the kids.
Ms. Gata?
I'm wondering, and this is, this is more about innovation and professional development, but you showed us some examples of things the teachers were doing in their classroom. As the staff gets younger, you are really working with people who are very, very familiar with technology. And I imagine that there are some marvelous things, some interesting things going on in classrooms that maybe nobody knows about. And I'm wondering how you are accessing what is actually happening in the system, not only accessing it, but looking at it, evaluating it, and then sharing it out? Because partly, I know from going to VEF meetings, where they have brought people in there to show things that they're doing, that there's really interesting stuff. And things that aren't terribly difficult to do if you happen to know about them. And I think that we've got, so what I'm saying is, there are a lot of things down at the ground level that we could be bringing up so that more teachers would know about them.
So what I find very difficult is, I do know of a lot of those things, and we can't bring them up until people have the resources in their school and they're easily accessible.
Just to add, I remember, and I think it was last year, it was, it was, I think, November, it might have even been 2013, when the VEF was going through some, there was a grant proposal. It's the ones where you just have to, it's not the longer ones.
The idea, idea lab?
And I remember the comment being made, that so many of the requests were for technology, for iPads, for whatever.
I don't know why I'm on a myth-busting thing tonight, but I do feel like this is, again, the same, and I've never actually seen the show, but, but I do feel like this is another place where the rhetoric of the conversation out in the community is so vastly different from like what we're actually doing and proposing, that it's just a little striking. So, I mean, there were conversations, I remember, about, you know, "Is this technology replacing teaching?" It's like, well, no. It's the opposite of that, right? It's technology enabling teaching. And so, you know, I think you've just done such a good job of explaining that and giving specifics, or, you know, "This is some sort of wish list." It's like, well, actually, this isn't close to a wish list. We are behind, this is basic, you know, devices, basic staff, basic professional development, teacher training that we need. Or, you know, people saying, "Well, how could, you know, why don't you start this program in the middle grades?" That was my favorite one. "Why don't you start this technology thing small in the middle grades, and then we can kind of see how it goes, and then roll it out?" Which is like such a...
This technology thing.
This technology thing. And literally, that is like, well, you've got like a fundamental misunderstanding of what we're doing here, right? This is not about a curriculum. We're not teaching a particular curriculum. This isn't, you know, like a particular culture or a particular, right? This is, what we're doing is where it's embedded in everything. And I think there's just so much out there about, "Let's go back to 2006 and re-base line from 2006," which, you know, the iPhones didn't exist, and, you know, let's, it's kind of fine. My school's fine. That was my favorite one. "We're doing fine in our school." It's like, "Well, look at the inequity numbers. We're not doing fine as a district. This is, we are behind." And so, what I love about this is, just in one place, it sort of summarizes all of the different pieces, from the high-level goals all the way through to just some of this basic myth-busting. So I appreciate that.
If people want copies of this, this is actually now up on our website. It's up from the advisory committee there, and it's actually the entirety of that population, which includes a couple other pieces of a presentation. But this presentation and all the handouts that you have in front of you are actually also up on the website as well.
Which is great. And I think one of the things that came out of that advisory conversation is, people said, "You know what? I actually understand how this is better and not just different." Right? You're not just putting an electronic textbook in someone's hand. You're showing me how you can move plate tectonics around, and that's a different way to experience education. You're showing me how you can, you know, look at online editing, and you experience editing in a different way when you're doing a group editing process. And, you know, just all those types of, the data gathering, the birds, data gathering, fifth grade across the country, and sharing that data with other students. It's just a different way to experience education, and I think that it's just, it's very exciting. So, thank you.
Ms. Chau, thank you.
Okay.
Maybe a new record at that podium, I think.
It's a good thing you have water bottles, which may or may not be banned by the town sometime soon. Okay. Yeah. Report out on the school committee workshop is not going to take 10 minutes, because most of it was an executive session. We were in executive session for real estate negotiations, for negotiations with, strategy for non-aligned personnel, for potential litigation, and for collective bargaining. So that was most of what we did. And the two things that we did outside of executive session were, the, we revoted the school, the SOI, the Statement of Interest, for the high school. Just so everyone's clear, that our priority is Brookline High School, and that's what we're submitting as soon as I sign this piece of paper, probably tomorrow, is my guess. And then I think, and the last thing that we did in open session, we canceled, which was, we were going to look at the curricular impacts of the budget, which we've just basically done here. So, that was our report on the workshop. All right. And we had better sandwiches and stayed within budget, which was also very exciting.
Thank you, Robyn. Very much.
Sandwiches within budget.
Better sandwiches in budget. Not only did we give up on cookies, we gave up on other things. Chips, I think, got lost. So, all right, that's it. Anything else? No new business? Okay. We're adjourned.
Thank you.